Five of the United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with our legal rights are ours.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. I see a few people here who have. I've got an update on the forty-three Chapman Street. The property has been released from the fire investigation. The cars will start being towed away soon, but I do not have an exact timeline. I heard it's within a week. Uh, the property owner with their insurance is in the process of getting quotes for demolitions. It might take a while because they have to test the building course fast just before they they can begin. And that is all I've got for updates at this time on the property. And, uh, open the meeting to the public. I have a timer this time. Five minutes per person.
The, um, the caretaker, Mr. Cooper spoke with my husband today and he said the vehicles will start coming out this week and they've already started removing the leaves. They hired somebody and they're removing, they started cleaning up the leaves today.
You should state your name and your address, please.
Oh, okay, sorry, Casey Boyer, forty-one Chapman Street.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, anyone else? Yes?
Scott Richner, sixteen Pratt Street. Uh, I was just wondering if there are any updates on the Village Club status.
That is still stuck in Canada. We can't actually, we've had a hard time getting someone to ship it and and we can't actually bring it across the border at the Rouse's Point crossing. It's gotta go to the main highway crossing.
Okay.
So it's just been stuck in that COVID limbo. There's not a heck of a lot we've been able to do about it. Any guests?
Calvin Cologne, forty-seven Chapman Street. Uh, I'm just wondering, we asked for all the code violations that are written up on the property and we only received one. I'm wondering, you know, if, uh, at the last meeting you said there was a stack like that, so I'm assuming there was more than just one.
Oh, buildings, property records include a lot more than just the complaints. Any other prior permits and stuff would be in there. So just because it's that thick doesn't mean it's thick with complaints. I was kind of expecting more from that too, but apparently only one person has complained about it. Anybody else? Okay. I'd like to thank you all for coming here and for public comment is very good to do. Not that it was bad last night, but it's very good to do. Minutes of the previous meeting, any questions? Can I have a motion to executive accept the minutes as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer Luterno, is there any additions or deletions to the bills?
We have done this evening.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I have one question. On page four, the water plant improvements, the twenty-eight thousand. Can we get an update? I mean, we've just paid, uh, I think, what, maybe two weeks ago or a month ago, we paid twenty-seven thousand and now it's another twenty-eight thousand to see what we're giving for our money.
Yeah, uh, that's part of the contract that we've already signed with them before I was here and and that's what we're paying on. One of the updates are they're trying to finalize some aspects of the design, which is why this email here is, is they want us to figure out whether we want the diesel generator or a natural gas generator to supply emergency power to it. So they're still working on it, but I'm just wondering if there's like a, if they have like a timeline of what they're doing and how they're billing them.
So we know that we're not getting double charged or something or, you know, we can see what exactly we're getting for our money every, every month or two months.
That's actually really good idea. I'd like to, that, I'll go get a timeline from them because I'd like to see a timeline too, because I want to know when we're starting to actually construct it.
Well, yeah.
It's still ways out.
And they can at least let us know what they're doing and, you know, to make sure that we're, you know, we're getting the best thing for our bucks, that's all. I'd like to see what we're paying for, just not just a, a bill from somebody for twenty-eight thousand dollars and.
It's on, on every bill we get. It's on, they've got like six, six different categories and on every bill that amount might be over two or three different categories. It'll say a certain amount to this category, a certain amount to that category, and it will give a percentage done on each of those projects. That's just part of the invoice that comes in every month.
So there is a breakdown?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we get copies of that?
I don't see why not.
Just to give us an idea of what we're paying for and.
Okay, Jim.
Yeah, because that entire invoice, it's always not included in the bracket.
Right, right. Make a motion to accept the bill? Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any correspondence today, Susan?
Yes. We received a letter from Montgomery Hose Hook and Ladder Company. Dear Mayor and Trustees, we wish to inform you of a new member that has been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months, Alexander Provost. Please act on this member and we thank you for your time in this matter. In this matter, but thank you.
Make a motion to accept the new member to the fire department?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have.
So I've got a travel authorization for two water department employees to go take their lab tests. This will be signed, anything on that? Is this training?
Uh, it will be Danny Gay and Eric Uli for the lab class that they'll have to take to keep their road license active for Danny and to get the road license for Eric Uli.
I'll put that as a form of motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Also, I have the, a contract for Option International here. This ended up in my junk mail. Um, before I can put stuff on the Option International site, I need to get, get authorization to sign this contract.
What are we putting up for option?
The, um, skate sharpener. The old broken one. And if it works out, we can put other things up on this too as well.
So you're saying anything that we surplus at a meeting, you can put on the option?
Yeah. It's an online option. We can put a floor price that if it doesn't get met, we don't have to accept the option. And, uh, pretty convenient. The buyer has to come over here and pick it up. We don't have to send it to them. It's their responsibility, responsibility to pick it up, which is pretty hefty and, um, like the purchaser will be required to pay four percent of the, of the premium. So we don't lose anything out of the delivery. And it goes to a wider audience, so it's not just limited to who hears these meetings or sees the meetings. It'll be nationwide audience for various different equipment. So if we put a truck up there, this just being Clint County, people from California can bid on it. I don't know how they get the truck because it's their responsibility, but.
Who did that? Who fired trucks?
Is there any cost to the village? No. Nothing at all? No.
I think it says thirty-dollar fee for each motorized vehicle and five dollars for each option law. That is not more than.
That's a cost of putting things up on the option, but there's no cost?
Right.
I hadn't read through that. There's no comp, there's no cost to sign it? There's a small fee to put stuff up?
That's what I'm talking about.
Right. Thank you, Dale, for catching me.
So if you put ten things up, you're talking fifty bucks or twenty-five bucks?
Well, it depends if you put it, yes, depends if you put it in a lot or if you just, if you sell it as a whole, it'll cost you five dollars. If you send it, sell it ten individual pieces, it's gonna cost you fifty.
The listing fee shall be deducted from the sale of the proceeds before a final payment is made to the seller.
Now, the, the skate sharpener, it says motorized vehicle slash equipment is thirty dollars. So that means if we put it up there, it'd be thirty dollars?
No, that's not, um, a motor vehicle. It's five dollars.
He says equipment.
Yeah.
Well, that could be like a, a loader or a tractor. I think, I think a motor, motorized equipment.
You see them going up though just to make sure?
Like a lawnmower, yeah, yeah. But that's the way I agree with it. I agree with it as a motorized, you know, say go like a lawnmower or something like that.
Yeah, skate sharpener is not mo, not a motor vehicle. You're not gonna drive that around. Well, that'd be interesting if someone made one of those. So you wanna do, you guys want to take some more time to read through it and approve it next time or do you wanna do it today?
I'll make a motion.
We read up on it a little bit more.
Okay. It's a little table until the next meeting. It is not, it is skate sharpener. Okay, and seeing as Tom Remain is not here, I'm not gonna be requesting the executive session about the table law. And I'm still gonna request an executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular employee.
All in, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Trusty Arno?
Uh, I'd just like to thank the rec center and, uh.
The generator.
Oh. Yeah, you're right.
Go ahead.
Uh, the generator. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
Uh, the generator. So I got an email today from the engineers and they want, they want a decision whether we're, we're gonna have a natural gas backup generator for the new water plant or a diesel generator backup.
I make a motion, we go with, uh, diesel generator.
I'll say that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Going with the diesel. Okay, trustee Arno?
Uh, I'd like to thank the rec center crew and electric department crew for cleaning up around the gazebo. They did a nice job. And, uh, I'd like to know what color, when we get around, when it gets nicer, what color are you gonna paint it? Or stain it?
Whatever.
They were, uh, Ethan asked if he could use the leftover paint from the rec center because we got like twenty gallons of it or something.
Sure. Sounds good to me.
Good to me. Saves money, it means we're get to use the leftover paint, so.
And I think we could take one of them tables out of the, uh, out of that gazebo. There's two big tables in there. There's one eight footer and there's one nine footer or ten footer inside there. I think we oughta do is take the table out and put it on the lawn. And the other table, the short table that's in there, bring it down here to the rec center and stick it down here for somebody to sit on or something. But there are a lot of older people that walk around here and stuff and they bring their grandkids to the playground and stuff and they got no place to sit.
Where would you like to put it at the rec center? Somewhere on the.
By the playground?
By the playground. If it's all right with Ethan, I mean, probably he's got a better place for it, I don't know.
I'd say like you should be, I mean, people sitting once are kids, so.
Yeah.
Should be a place for them to sit.
At least, at least a park bench.
Yeah.
Is it a full, is it like a picnic table?
Yeah.
That'll be better.
Yeah, it's picnic table and the other, the other big one in there, I mean, it's, it's like a ten footer. I mean, it's humongous, you know? At least people could get out and park in the parking lot and stuff and have a picnic if they wanted or something or at least a set at outside, you know? And also, uh, and at the library, thank the guy that put up the railing in there. She thought it was very nice. And also, I'd like to, uh, thank Jared and Lisa Turner for a great job they're doing on the windows on the old Arman's building. They're doing a wonderful job. It looks really nice downtown now, starting to anyhow. Other than that, that's all I have for now.
Okay. Trusty Rodriguez?
Well, the benches that were brought up last meeting, I wanted to talk with Ethan, I wanted to talk with Susan about it. The grant that we got to put those benches in, the money ran out. So it's about, the benches are what, three hundred dollars you said each?
About three hundred, three fifty, I found on website.
Now, the concrete slabs for the rest of the benches have already been poured, so we're gonna work on another grant to get, just put the benches in, that's all we really need. Slabs are already poured. Ethan's made aware of it, Susan's made aware of it, that's what we're working on next. As far as the time being, I mean, I think it's a good idea to put the picnic tables out there. I mean, at least one or two so people can sit. Be nice. We have some composite ones that were donated from Pfizer that are underneath the building that are really heavy, so you don't have to worry about people dragging them around and tipping them over. And that might be a, a thought also for temporary, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
We do get our benches, because I noticed that people are sitting on the ground and oh, you know.
Yeah. Uh, if we order benches, if we can get enough, I'd like to see a couple of the benches down behind the coffee shop on that property of the village, down behind the dinner gate and stuff. Couple, couple down there or a picnic table down there or something.
Yeah.
You know, that's a nice spot for people to sit. I mean, the, the village got a right of way to go down there, I mean.
How is public, how's parking for that? Do they, do they have to park at, uh, the village parking?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's parking available.
Yeah.
Good.
Parking available.
So that's what we're having the benches right now. We'll all bring up the idea of the other benches that we got. Yeah, I mean, just something. And then the, uh, the skate sharpener, the fee right now is five dollars to sharpen your skates. And Ethan came to me and he wanted to know if we can raise it to seven dollars. It's still lower than any other place around. He said he believes playing against sports in Platteburg is ten dollars to sharpen your skates. And he said, you know, if two dollars each time we sharpen skates, now we'll help pay off a piece of equipment sooner and then we can put more in the rec department funds.
Sounds good to me.
I don't have a problem.
All right.
Motion in a second.
That's a motion, yeah. A motion to raise the skate sharpener fee to seven dollars.
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Trusty Menard?
Just wanted to remind everybody that spring cleanup is this week. The guys have been going out already, they're doing a good job, so just wanna make, make sure everybody gets their, their limbs and leaves and everything out so that the guys can pick them up. And that's all I have.
Uh, trustee Pelkey?
Yeah, it's just an update on the water plant, no wastewater. Um, they're doing some routine maintenance, so you'll probably be seeing some guys on top of the water tower. They're doing inspections, so.
When is that?
Monday.
Monday?
That'll be Monday. They're doing, uh, some maintenance, so, um, they're working through some engineering problems from the past engineers upon our water project and, uh, I think our superintendent of the wastewater and water plant and our mechanic pretty much hammered out some issues that they had to have attention to. I think they're doing a really good job, they come up with some good ideas, so they're working together on that. The village signs, as you come into Rouse's Point, they're getting very dingy. Um, if you notice, the one at the fire department is very bright. I mean, it's newer, of course. I'm wondering if there's somebody that can repaint them, re-code them or something, because...
Where did we get them from?
Uh, Flying Cow out of.
Vermont, somewhere.
Somewhere's in Vermont.
Well, the one at the fire station, uh.
Scott Lowe.
Scott Lowe made that.
Did he paint that or is that? I mean, can we get somebody locally to paint them rather than bring them all the way to Flying Cow and somewhere's in Lord Vermont?
Have somebody like Debbie Calisti or somebody like that or whatever.
What about the guy that's doing the work that has the paintings up in the windows downtown?
Well, his wife, I mean.
Yeah.
Live on the corner of, uh, Academy and Maple. Uh, she paints. Debbie Rochester paints, uh, is an artist.
I think when they paint them, they have to be coated with something to preserve them?
Yes. Yes.
I've been working on a few projects at home, like with cement animals, I have them repainted and what I'm doing is I'm clear coating them with, uh, it's called the rim, rim spray and it really, the sunlight doesn't affect the paint that way.
So ultraviolet rays.
Or the ultraviolet rays. I think something has to be put on those signs to protect them, but it's, it's get to the point where they're getting hard to read, you know, they're getting dingy, so we have three of them. There's one on Lake Three, Duncan Smith, the one by the underpass and the one down by the bridge road. I think they need, we paid a lot of money for them, I think we should keep them off. Maybe see if we can find some local artists or maybe talk to Scott Lowe and see how he or if he has any suggestions. I think they need to be cleaned up a little bit. The Fourth of July committee, they sold some tickets. They had the drawing Saturday, May first. First place winner was Kim LeBam. Second place winner was Randy LeBunkbar and third place winner was Roy Cardan. That's just a little update on if anyone bought tickets. Everybody wants to know, you know, who won, so hopefully this little social media will get it out there. The fire department is gonna have a chicken barbecue. We have a couple of people that stepped up that wanna be chairperson, so the chicken barbecue is gonna happen this year. It might be like Moors where you drive up, get your chicken barbecue, all in a nice container and you'll be able to go home and, and enjoy your meal. And the last thing I wanna talk about is the vandalism that's happening around, around Rouse's Point. They had vandalism down on our pier. They destroyed a couple of ballers down there, light ballers. They're down here in the rec park at late at night. I think we need to, if everybody has their neighborhood watch program or if they're, if they see something going on, please call, call somebody, call the state police to share somebody. I mean, it's too bad to have vandalism going around our nice parks, you know, we try to keep everything up and through our village. I noticed that they, they, uh, they took spray paint down on our bolt launch, they wrote onto the cement down there, I mean, there's just no reason for that. So if anyone sees anything, please be aggressive and call our local state police and you can be anonymous, you don't have to give your name, so, you know, you don't have to be involved. Just, they appreciate the heads up of what's going on in our little village. And it's too bad to have the vandalism going on.
Talk with Ethan about that, what happened down in the dugout. And before, the cameras weren't pointed in like the best spots. So now we switched the camera angles to like where people usually hang out later on during the day and stuff, so if it happens again, hopefully he catches it on the cameras and we can see what's going on.
Yeah, hopefully.
Well, down there, you oughta take and put a door on there for one thing.
Yes.
People took and defecated in there. You know, that's, that's ridiculous.
There's a lot of activity going on in those dugouts.
Yeah.
And like Ben said, if there was a door on there, I think it would discourage a lot of it. There's, there's good lighting, I mean, I, you can see who's out there and with the cameras, yeah, it does help, but, I mean, the other night they were stacking the, the picnic tables on top of each other underneath the, the gazebo out here, so you had to yell at them to tell them to stop, you know, it's, it's just ridiculous.
Now, one thing I saw in Vermont once, which might actually be useful to do, is in Vermont, they, they put a, uh, chen, they put a fence around it, a see-through, these are see-through fence, metal fence, which, and then they had a lock and gate on it so they could keep, keep people out when there isn't a baseball game, but at the same time, when there is a baseball game going on, it protects the people in the dugout from errant balls.
It's completely closed in. Front's completely screened in, it's just a doorway. So it's all you gotta do is put one of them gates like that Lowe's, even buy one of those gates that are six foot high and just put a couple hinges and they could put a, a lock with a hat spin on it and you're done with it. And then they wouldn't go in there and then when the coaches come, they can have their own key to open them up and do what they have to do. And I think it would keep the kids, the younger kids out of there.
Yeah, the previous dugouts were locked.
Yeah, I think the, the two old ones up here, our army have doors on them. I think it's just that one new one they never, it never got finished to have a door put on it, so.
It's just a thought, you know, it's, it would deter a lot of problems, I think.
Yeah, that'd be an inexpensive way to deter a lot of it, yeah.
Wouldn't be such a hangout for juveniles. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Uh, Cooper's not here today. Any other reports, Susan?
I do have an update on the grants. Got a, an email from FEMA just telling us that we're still in the pending project development, so that's, um, federal government. We will get it when they get around to sending it to us, basically. And I did send the Barton LeJudas bills to DASNE to use that thirty-three thousand that was left over from the water plant grant from a couple of years ago. They have everything they need except the, um, bank statement. They want the actual bank statement when it comes in. We don't have the bank statement here, but as soon as we do get that, the deputy treasurer, Becky Pelkey, will give me a copy. I will send it off to DASNE and they will send us our money. And that's all I have.
Open meeting to the public? Yes?
Got a question. Where is your code enforcement officer and where's your lawyer? She should be here at every meeting and I'll tell you why. People may, I don't know if she has any questions or not, or, or anybody has questions, I don't have any. But, you know, that's all taxpayers' dollars and you guys should get down, come down on them and say, you're here, it's only once a month. It's not as if it wasn't when I was there, it was two, three times a month. But anyways, I think that's the fair way to do it. Now, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, so the public will know that. They're getting scuffed, scuffed too. The other, the other, other question I'm gonna ask you about is, uh, let's see here. Oh, the extension in moratorium. Why are you extending a moratorium? It's electric you're talking about.
Right.
Right?
Electric boilers, boilers.
Yeah, it's on the boilers over there. But that's all taxpayers' money. Why, why are you? There was a law put out in the one time that there was no more electric boilers.
That was a memorandum that kept getting extended over and over and over again. And the last memorandum said that they're going to do a study, but because of COVID and everything else going on, there was never a study done?
Well, I would think somebody could have some time to do a study. I mean, that's just my opinion, but.
No, that's what we're doing. We're trying to get into a local law.
Yeah, because we're trying to finish, finalize this thing, so we don't have to worry about it again.
Well, I hope it get down pretty soon after taxpayers' earnings ended up my paying on, you know? It costs, every time you, you do that, you know, all the power they use, it raises it. It doesn't hurt me, but it hurts a lot of, there's a lot of people in this village that aren't making good salaries and that are done.
And that's why we don't have electric boilers.
That's right. That's why you don't have electric boilers. Exactly, that's, that's what I'm coming to, because they're, they're very expensive.
That's why we're not allowing them.
That's why we're working on this, yes.
No, you understand what I'm saying, but.
Yes.
You know, you have to work a little bit harder on them, I guess, if that's the case, because it's been a long time. Been a long time.
The nice thing, when Tom's not here, we're not paying him, so.
Well, he should be, that's what I'm asking you.
I thought he was gonna be here when, when I.
And you're paying him, you, you know, in the same way as you're paying your, the, uh...
No, when, when Tom isn't working, he's not getting paid as a contractor. He's not salaried.
No, no, no. I, I don't wanna disagree with, I don't wanna argue with you, Bob. No.
Would you mind stating your name and your address, Bob?
I was, pardon?
Would you mind stating your name and address for, so we can have that on record?
Forty-four Chapman Street, Bob Rassical.
Thank you. And now, Bob?
Yeah, it's just principle. All I, all I'm doing is I'm trying to get a fair break for all of the people. You understand what I'm saying? And it should, it should be, you know, you guys should be concerned. I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying that if you're not aware of it, if you don't, you're I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying that if you're not aware of it, if you don't, you're not thinking about it, I would appreciate it if you would think about it for the, for the general public, the taxpayer. I don't think that's too much to ask.
This moratorium was supposed to be passed tonight.
But.
This moratorium was supposed to be passed tonight, we finally got the, you know, the paperwork done on it, but unfortunately, the attorney's not here.
That's what I mean.
And, you know, we have to extend it, we have to wait for more weeks.
Yeah, I know, exactly, which is.
We could set up a special meeting and do it earlier.
No, I, I don't understand.
People are knocking down the doors right now, school's not giving boilers in this time of year, but.
No.
I do wanna make sure that this gets done, we move forward to protect our taxpayers of the village. That's all we're trying to do and protect our system, cause like I explained before, our system wasn't designed, wasn't built to have everybody put electric boilers in.
That's right.
There's other, there's other forms of, uh, energy efficiency.
Now, one day, they cut electric boilers all out, they're electric, they were, they were against the law.
Yeah.
We had those electric boilers, I, I worked on a lot of electric boilers during the year.
It was a moratorium that they put on.
I know, yeah, but, but.
But unfortunately, the moratorium is only like a twenty-four month moratorium. And it runs out and then nobody follows up with it.
Nobody ever passed it into law, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get it into a, as a law.
As a law, rather than a moratorium.
Cause it covers more than just the waters, it covers hot air furnaces, so. It's hot air furnaces.
Then it's all this turn on the bow.
It was supposed to be passed tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we need a lawyer.
That's what I'm asking you, yeah.
Yeah, it was supposed to be passed tonight, but our village attorney is not here.
There you go. So that means you gotta go another month. And then if he doesn't show up again or he doesn't show up on it.
Two weeks.
You know?
Two weeks.
Pardon?
Two weeks.
Oh, so it was only once a month that you had to meet.
No, no, twice a month, first and third.
I thought it was, yeah. I thought it was, yeah.
That's number change, Bob.
Oh, that's a war, that's about a war, sorry. I didn't think it was gonna have like an incoming along going up. Any other comments from the public? I'd like to thank you all for attending the meeting today and, uh,